I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Read the minutes? Get approval for the meeting minutes from August twenty-seventh?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Steven Martin? Third layer?
No.
Yes.
Make the motion to approve the September standard bill of the state?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, private water line update. Easement.
Do you want me to take this?
Sure.
Surveys are done, so we know where we have to do, what we have to do. I've prepared the easements that have to be signed, alright? I'm not sure at this point in time that I've been able to accurately reflect the owners of the property.
Right here's one of them, Steven.
And you are?
My name is Steven Sandgill, number one eighty-five Kingsport, Gossport.
Okay.
The other one should be here shortly.
I just talked to her.
And there's Steven Sandgill?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I have yours ready for you to sign if that's still your inclination.
Yeah, I gotta, I need to read over it.
That's fine, I'll go ahead and give this to you and we'll just kick this, kick this down the way and then maybe decide if that's what you want to do.
Yep.
And then I'm an honorary, I can take care of it. This has to be recorded, this particular easement runs with the land, but we're going to have to continue, the town will continue to have access to that line for repairs and things like that. And whatever maintenance on the top, we will take care of forever and return it to the same place with seating and everything else.
Stated in there that way, right?
Pardon me?
It's all stated, they work that way, right?
So, it's, it's all stated here, so let me, let me go ahead and give you this. The other, the second one for one seventy-five Kingsport, you're one eighty-five?
Yes, sir.
One seventy-five Kingsport, I have a Michael C. Zack and Deborah Hunter.
This is the referee.
Parker.
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 Okay, and what happened to Michael C. Zack?
Uh, he signed off my deed to my house and everything, that's been a long time ago.
Okay, so?
Yes, so, yeah.
Okay, so what I'll have to do then is I'll have to go ahead and change the easement. I'll get your name and your number and then I'll make arrangements with you to meet your office over here or bring it to you whenever it takes to get it signed.
Okay.
And I'm gonna go ahead and invite you guys to copy the suit and take a look.
So is this gonna stop me from going there? Is this gonna stop me from going there?
And we'll just go on and get this back.
Number one time adjustment, count number one on nine, three hundred, profit adjustment, one forty-six fifty-four.
I'm wondering if she had any arrangement. She's not having one time adjustment.
Make the motion if she gets the one time adjustment? All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna recess for the budget meeting.
Do you wanna, do you wanna go ahead and take care of another?
Sure.
Because this is for the afternoon, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Sewer bill for one twenty-three North Street, North Third Street.
I didn't get your call when the water turned on. I explained to her that there was a capacity, sewer bill on, called her out, they're right here. So, she said that she didn't want to pay the sewer bill and that she wanted to talk to the town board. As far as tonight was the meeting.
The reason I said that is because that has been completely, I mean, everybody has a steel house, I mean, it's been in shambles for months here. There's no sewer and water grant at all. We don't want anything like that from the time of possession. Now, we're fixing it and plan on running sewer lines and we don't have a problem paying it, but don't understand why we're gonna charge you four hundred dollars.
When did he take possession of it?
It was maybe, uh?
March.
March.
March. The problem is, if we knock this off, we've got other people who are saying that, uh, in a month.
Right.
And they don't have water.
Right.
And we can't do it very well.
I understand, I understand.
How about if we don't charge you a connect for the water?
See, from the security.
Yeah.
Can I say something?
Sure.
We'll have to charge deposit for the water we turned off. So?
Connection fees, deposit. What you do versus sell the place, whatever.
Do you have to charge them the deposit?
Uh, you say, we're gonna take fifty dollars off of the sewer bill and apply it for the deposit and I can keep the book straight by putting it in the right council seat. So basically, you're giving her a fifty, fifty dollar discount.
Is that okay? All in favor?
I'll second it, my man.
Aye. Think that's fifty dollars.
So, the motion is to charge the?
Yes, charge the fifty dollars, make it on the, uh, sewer.
In the sewer bill, if it's seventeen months, twenty-four thirty-four, we're gonna owe her fifteen dollars and set the expense and that's what the go interest, or not the interest, we can't. So, is that what? And now that four thirteen seventy eight, fifty dollars, you don't think so?
Can I show you something?
Sure.
Okay. Does that, does that hold anything?
We, we still have to change it.
Yes, we're clear. Yeah.
Can we go ahead and change?
We have to change the name.
Paper entrance, whatever, arrangements, I prefer to get that signed. Ready to record it and I would say.
But if they, if they say it's okay, can we go ahead and board it?
Can we board it, my man?
As long as both of them say, we're gonna sign the papers, we're ready to go, then I would say, say that's fine.
Okay.
Let's go ahead. I'll hold you up on it.
Three?
Still there. It was actually.
Yeah.
B and T's, you're dead.
When were you planning on getting some hot patches? I know we're talking about the water.
Hot patch? Reason we backed off the hot patch is because, um, B and T, they said wherever we patched, they might be there and then they just have to dig it right back up and we'd just be wasting our money. So, they said, wait till we, they got done, got their job done, then going patch. So, I figured that spring, we'll go in, might do some cold patches winter, depends on where they're at, because we, uh? So, that way, we ain't racing hot patch, we ain't racing cold patch. I know the holders there, we just can't afford to put a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars out in hot patch, cold patch, and have it right back up till they're done. So, that's where that stands. So, um? Yeah, yeah. We have to put, um, up to four tons while back, so we just don't wanna waste that four tons and they come right through there, pull it back out. While we're on streets, um, the alley behind the state fire station, I'm gonna need another load of air freshener. So, you approve for that?
Make the motion, I'll second it.
All in favor?
How much are you talking?
Just try it.
I have a question. On Second Street, where the sand is running off of the?
Yes.
Somebody approached me and wanted to know if they could come and get dirt filled buckets full of it.
Have all they want. They best can have to pick it up. We try to scratch it every time we go through there.
Right.
Take three or four, we oughta take it all.
Oh, I, I might say.
Fire update?
Good.
You good?
Oh, I do have one thing to ask.
What's that?
If you guys have anything, like curves you want painted in or street you want slept or something, let me know, 'cause I got, it's got forty hours, needs to have that money in the month. So, big community service. You know, we supervise what I mean. Just having you a prime and nobody works, you can sign off. How about her? She's done, she got released.
If you noticed everywhere we painted curves already, the B and T has crashed.
I know, I've seen that.
Black.
Okay. You wanna jump now for the?
We're gonna recess for a budget hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
And you can get a copy of this at the town hall. Complete details of budget testament by fund and or department may be seen by visiting the office of this unit of government at Seventh East Main Street, Gossport. Notice is hereby given to taxpayers of Gossport Civil Town, Bolin County, Indiana, that the proper office, officers of Gossport Civil Town will conduct a public hearing on the year twenty twenty-five budget. Following this meeting, any ten or more taxpayers may object to a budget, tax rate, or tax levy by filling an objection petition with the proper officers of Gossport Civil Town, not more than seven days after the hearing. The objection, objection petition must identify the provisions of the budget, tax rate, or tax levy to which taxpayers object. If the petition is filed, Gossport Civil Town shall adopt with the budget a finding concerning the objections in the petition and testimony presented. Following the aforementioned hearing, the proper offices of Gossport Civil Town will need to adopt the public budget. Date of hearing, date of public hearing, Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Date of adoption meeting, Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. Time of public hearing, seven fifteen P M. Time of adoption meeting, seven fifteen P M. Public hearing place, three oh one North Ninth Street, Gossport, Indiana. Adoption meeting place, three oh one North Ninth Street, Gossport, Indiana. Estimated civil max levy, ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Property tax cap credit estimate, seven hundred and ninety dollars. The general fund budget estimated for two hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and three dollars. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, including appeals and levies exempted, and maximum levy limitations, ninety-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. Excessive levy appeals, zero. Current tax levy, ninety-five thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars. Local road and street, budget estimate, ten thousand five hundred and fifty. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, zero. Excessive levy appeals, zero. Current tax levy, zero. Motor vehicle highway, a hundred and six thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, zero. Excessive levy appeals, zero. Current tax levy, zero. Commu- communal?
Community.
Community. Three thousand five hundred dollars. Maximum estimated funds to be raised, zero. Excessive levy appeals, zero. Current tax levy, zero.
Civil tax.
Civil tax? Yeah. Now what do you do? What's the term of the regular week? Can I get a second?
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Golf cart ordinance, home business.
At your direction, I have prepared, um, a replacement golf cart ordinance for the use of golf carts in the town of Gossport. It includes some provisions from state law, but it also requires those to have a maintenance, a maintenance review every year and to post a sticker rear of each one of them. We need to have lights and lights front and back and operate as any other motor vehicle. People that operate golf carts in the state of Indiana, the town of Gossport, are required to not only have a driver's license, but also insurance on those vehicles. And that's all going to be required. We have had, um, a golf cart ordinance in effect since probably two thousand and nine?
Two thousand.
Two thousand?
I made it ten, yes.
But to move, nobody can find the ordinance, so?
He lost it.
I lost it. And I tore computers away from the time that I prepared it in two thousand. So, I prepared it again. We will post that in, in the town hall for your review. It's not going to be approved tonight. And anybody that has any questions can address the?
Yeah, it'll be a twenty-five dollar fee too, when they get it.
It's a twenty-five dollar fee to?
One year.
To get the sticker, but it's been a twenty-five dollars since two thousand, so it's not, but nobody's done it since that time. Uh, so, we're back, back on track to, to do that. So, we will post that and then have you go ahead and review it and consider approving it in our next meeting.
How about the side, the sides and the quads and stuff?
Uh, those are, we're, we're, we're gonna take another look at those. Those are separate, separate ordinance, simply because of the fact that some of them are, even though they're motorized, are not required to have a license to operate them, some of them. So, I'm, I'm, that's the second thing I'm gonna look at.
Like your four, four wheelers, uh, your side by sides and stuff like that?
Yes, sir.
Um, I know they, they can get the county stickers.
State sticker.
It's a state sticker that run for county.
And we, you know, again, I, the intent?
If they got them, would that be?
But they won't be in effect for Gossport. They'll have to have a separate sticker.
They'll have to have a separate sticker.
That's what I wanted to know.
And then, uh, on the four wheelers, in the old ones, they could ride those, but they had to be under the same statute as golf cart.
Yeah, the, 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 the problem is, it's a question too, as to where you can, can operate these, whether or not they're restricted to, to use on?
Or?
On streets. Golf carts are strictly restricted to the streets. You can't ride on the sidewalks, under this, and things like that. So, we'll be looking, I'm looking at drafting an ordinance for it.
Of course, we got a lot of four, four by fours, fours coming in the town, side by sides, stuff like that, and, um, so they can ride them, that state can provide, give them the right to ride them on county roads. It says, all green, puffy up.
Morgan, they got it.
So? I'm just curious if they're gonna make a second one for that.
Yeah, because we, if the state gives them permission to ride on the county roads, there's nothing we can do to overrule state law. Uh, so that's, that's why we're doing this, is a separate.
Only three in the town of Gossport, right?
Pardon me?
We, we can, can in, in the town of Gossport.
If there's a state, state ordinance, state statute covering them, we cannot, we, we cannot do anything that's more restrictive than what the state provides. We can still address it, but we can't do anything any stricter than what the state law provides. That's what I think.
But, uh, what I was saying is usually if it's a state law, they gotta have a license with the state, usually.
I don't know. That's what I don't know.
Well, most of them, most of them, side by side, you gotta do sixteen, divide and any now.
Insurance, everything.
Insurance and everything.
See mine, I've got the state tag on mine and I got insurance on it too. Instead of mine, side by side, I've got the state stickers on mine and I've got insurance on them.
Right. So, we, we, we cannot pass an ordinance that would, would say you don't have to have insurance and you don't have to have a driver's license or anything else.
I'm just saying, if they had that sticker in their entrance, they wouldn't have to buy a sticker for Gossport.
I'm saying if they have a state sticker, they have a state sticker, then they can? They can do what they want to and we don't have to have a Gossport. We can, we can't duplicate an additional fee there, yes.
Do they not have to abide by the operating, the sign, you know, stop footings?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm saying kids running down the alleys and?
According to the state statute, even if we're operating on the county road, we still have to call all that. That's up to county, yeah. So, I, I was saying?
Yeah, but, uh, I, I, I agree that that's, that you do have to abide by that and then we have to, just a different question of enforcement. So, that's, that's, that's the problem with, with everything, so. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I just have one question. When you said that they had to have an operator's license, does that mean it cannot be revoked? Like, if they had a drunk driving record and their license got revoked, can they continue to drive the golf cart?
No.
Okay. Who's gonna enforce that?
A valid, now, that's, that's a good question, but, you know, the long and short of it is law enforcement, town can go ahead and do it, the way that I set it up. The way that I set this up is that the town officials can also enforce it and although there's a penalty, and, let's start over again. There is a penalty so that if we, if we find somebody who's operating wrongfully without a sticker or something else, first offense is a hundred dollars, second is two fifty, third is five hundred in a calendar year. This gives me the power to take them to court. I need to do that soon, in court costs and terms of fees to try to enforce it. That's the best I can do in the absence of that at a time mark.
Okay, and my second question is, children under the age of six, are they allowed to ride in the golf cart or not?
They are.
Yep.
They are, but also typically have to have seat belts in the golf cart. People who are supposed to be using the seat belts like anything else, but there's no, no prohibition against them riding in, in the golf cart as long as they're not driving.
They have to have a helmet on too, don't they?
I don't know about, I don't know about that. Just I do know the seat belts are required.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Get that back up next.
Um, where are we, if I may, where are we in terms of the easements? Is that something that?
Yeah, the only concern I have is how deep we're gonna dig, because there is a natural gas line that runs from both of our houses.
If you would?
It'd be four feet. Four feet, okay. So, as long as we're going four feet under, then we shouldn't hit the gas line there.
No, and I think we'll, we'll take good care to have those marked so that there's no, no particular damage caused to anything.
And the locating has been called in, so you should be?
Go on.
Though you shouldn't start seeing more anymore.
Yeah.
I heard some kind of a hole with a pink flag from my apartment or whatever.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Somebody was digging in our, in our yard with, by a sling.
Are we, are we, are we? Our gas line?
Um, Mr. Stevens, if you are, if you're okay with that, I, I will go ahead and have you sign it. We'll get it approved and then I will go ahead and send you a copy of that tomorrow and then we will go ahead and get it recorded. Ms. Parker, I'll go ahead and prepare yours, change the name and delete a name and I'll make arrangements with you to either bring it by or you can come by my office, which is right next to the town clerk's office here, here in Gossport, to get it signed.
Yes.
We'll go ahead, if, if you wanna go ahead and do that, we can let you go ahead and go if, if you're applying to state.
Mary, while during that, Jason's saying they're gonna come in Monday and do that. Now, we want, Brian Vanier's come over and do the tap or what? I don't know, Scott or Troy can do the tap or what, and we'll be heading back.
He said he would show us how to do the tap. He said he would show us how to do the tap. I'll show us.
I'll dig, I'll dig the plain. Now we're gonna agree on, we're gonna put the master meter up by the circle, right?
Yeah.
That's what I wanna know. So I'll get Jason, see what time, Monday and Steph will get up there, get geared.
We have a go. We have a go. Yeah.
So could we pull master meter from over here and take over there? Could we have a master meter? I'll get with Scott and Troy tomorrow. We'll make sure we got everything we need for Monday morning.
We don't have.
Yeah, they don't get it until. They got time all the way to come with them, so they won't be.
The whole team of you with regards.
Yeah, it's not very old. Should be good.
Go ahead.
Yeah, see around here.
Since we were part of this, this part. Uh, yeah, we'll go ahead and get this thing back. Approving the, the town's entry into the easement of one seventy prime. Kings Court can authorize the ten on the board president to sign the documents. As soon as they're prepared and signed, like. If you have a motion to that fact, so moved. Okay.
All in favor?
So I will give the second easement ready. And then we'll go ahead, I'll make arrangements to get Ms. Parker in my office. We'll get a sign, we'll get you in. And then we'll get a position to go ahead and get this recorded and go, go ready to roll.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay. Shelley is requesting that you submit the park on October nineteenth from three to six. I made a motion that we approve, Shelley, you use this?
I'm saying.
All in favor? Water heater for the doctor's office.
Hold on, we can get Scott to replace the water heater that's not working in the doctor's office. They want those two thousand dollars to have. They want install or you can raise it. Costs a little.
I don't have any gas.
It's a gas line. Walk the line in, walk the line out.
He says there's nothing to it. Your fault.
I can guess. I need pretty good. I need that load. We got four hundred, five hundred dollars. I used to have gas.
Two thousand dollars?
Can I get a motion to approve the water heater for the doctor's office?
Motion to approve.
All in favor? I don't know, I don't see them. Are they doing that?
Two thousand dollars? My was four hundred fifty.
Carol Watson approached me in regards for the parade for the school. I think it's the twenty eighth, twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Yeah. I get a motion to approve it?
Just, Charles, be careful.
Yeah, yeah. Well, B and T's not gonna be, be on that route.
I already talked to him.
With all the grammar, yeah. All the stuff.
All right, restaurants in the park.
Heard.
For me? Restaurants in the park.
Oh. Oh, that's up?
That's up.
Oh, you didn't talk about that? Come over here, we'll see about it. Didn't, didn't own it yet?
I don't.
So I didn't know I was on the agenda, I would've stopped by. So what do you wanna know?
Have you got thirty thousand matched yet?
Just about. I've put out about thirty-five various polls, like the one I gave you. And I'm still sending some of those out, but have gotten some responses back positive. But now we are probably approaching twenty-five, thirty thousand that they will match. So that may not, not sure yet whether that'll get us to the end product. But we have a lot more bricks to sell and we have some trees to sell that will probably get us to about seventy-five thousand or so. As far as the bricks, we sold fifty bricks at this point. That means that I can make the order and all the bricks will be paid for for the whole area that we find. But we still could sell a hundred and fifty more bricks. You know, for, that's how much space there is available for memorial bricks and great bricks. So all of that money can go directly to the restaurants. So, but yeah, it's coming along. I haven't gotten a report yet from the foundation on the online activity yet. But that should be happening on the, current on that. But as far as, you know, some of the, we have just gotten some of the requests out, so.
Is he getting close?
So we'll know.
I think the town will get something.
Yeah.
Kick some in from the town?
You say this, this came out very timely. As I'm sending out those packets, uh, you know, including this tenant. It's a pretty good spread. So yeah. And I have plenty of orders for bricks here.
Percy, the end of July, July thirty-first, we had ten thousand one hundred and sixty-nine dollars in corporations in the general buildings and grounds. I think that you could very easily donate five thousand dollars to the project. The only thing I can think of that we're gonna need some money is to fix a, yeah, door down to our station that was having a problem with an accident, but, but I can't see that going over five thousand dollars. That's not an insurance claim, but at least five thousand dollars would at least show that the town is committed to the project. And I don't know legally if we could make a donation to the community foundation area. Which we do it out of ignorance, why?
I would hope you, if it's, if it's for municipal improvements, ultimately end up with municipal improvements such as the restaurants and the answer shows. So I think it's appropriate to go ahead and.
So when's the matching in October?
Yeah, we're, we're in the sixty day period right now. And that will come to close October twenty-seventh. So there's still time, time to collect.
Didn't find out it's more than five thousand dollars short. Been saying, well, we did find, we fell short anyway. I'm just thinking ahead. Cause I think that's what you were going for, just in case something, did the white make its mark? Well, Harry, the five thousand or? We always had two.
So you realize that five thousand is ten thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, the five thousand.
But do you think that you would make the thirty without the five? And then the town kick in the five after you got your.
It's, it's immaterial to the fact that it's likely to take us more than sixty thousand. The reason we know what we said sixty thousand is because the grant would get us to that. So we thought we could raise thirty ourselves and get to sixty. But I, I mean, we'll be doing a lot of sweat equity for those restaurants to get it to sixty thousand dollars, so.
The thing with the grant is if you would've said that our goal is gonna be forty and they're gonna match forty, that's eighty, and you don't hit that, you get nothing.
Right, yeah.
So if you undershoot it just a little bit and you hope for that, then you at least get that matched. And that's what the goal was.
And this, this grant. Five thousand dollars.
Right.
When it was due, it's better to say, okay, eight thousand dollars, ten, whatever it costs to me to make sure we get to that mark.
This grant will allow us to do a lot of work ourselves, so such as excavation. Running, I can easily get the footings in and all that with the equipment that the town has. And, you know, we'll save through the construction like that. There's a lot that I can do, but as long as my wife doesn't know about it. But.
So if we don't make five thousand now and we fall short, say, can we donate more?
Now we, I'm sure we can find some. It might not be a general thing, but I have to say, hey, we're gonna take some of the trouble. We got six thousand dollars here or whatever and put part of that in. Rainy day finders a little bit, but if, if we see it, I'll be sure.
Yeah.
Big key, I mean, there's fifteen, there's fifteen thousand in brick sales. Two thousand in brick sales yet. So you're gonna, y'all don't need, sell bricks, we'll, we'll get there, so.
Can I make a motion that the town donates five thousand dollars for the restaurant? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we got one citizen.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg.
At least say something, cause I thought it was her last time, but she said it wasn't her.
I don't know. Do we have a citizen that?
I'm gonna sign it.
No, I didn't sign it.
I, I got one thing. We got a little scooter running around town. With all different kids on it and stuff. Need to put a stop to it.
The one ran right out in front of me, didn't even stop direct right here. I mean, I saw him in time, but he's like.
I've been at the station, watched him. They shoot across that street on that little thing people can see in the car.
It's an electric scooter.
No, it's gas.
Oh, is it?
This is a gas. So.
There is insurance.
The worst thing is that they run down the alleys.
If they know they run over, they got them through.
I know.
They got mine the signs and which they.
I know. And just get on to do that. Yeah.
I mean, I seen them run through, right across Third Street on Main Street without stopping. The other day I heard them scream, I thought a car done hit them. I mean, it's gonna happen. They go out in the alleys, don't, don't look, it's flying. I did get off the other day and told them keep them off, keep it off the sidewalk. Cause they went down to buy Millie's and grocery store that are late flying. Somebody came, oh, somebody comes out the tavern or somewhere, opens that door. Door done.
Even though I wasn't on the agenda, I apologize. The GBA would like permission to ask for the park for Holiday Festival and scheduled for December the fourteenth. And if we can just go ahead and maybe, I don't know if you guys can do this or not, but just allocate the second Saturday of every December from here on out, so we don't have to ask for permission. Same way with lazy days, if we could just make that the second weekend in August. You know, I know that companies and parks usually rotate, but we could just make those a known issue that we don't want to ask for all the time, that would be fantastic. And then if we, we're not going to have a parade this year, cause it's just so hard with the weather. And, you know, we planted it in the weatherheads and we can't add one. So if we can have volunteer fire truck, bring a sink at like, at like twelve.
We'd like to hear. Do that to allow it on the second Saturday of December every year until.
What about lazy days? It's a second, second weekend.
It's the second all end of August.
There's no reason why we can't do that the same way. But you have to put until.
Until further notice.
Until further notice, that way that gives us the ability to go back.
All right. Make a motion? We okay the holiday festival and lazy days? Until further notice?
Did you make, I don't know if I can, GBA, I don't know if I can actually.
Second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Somebody come in, there's a dog or dogs in the park a lot.
Dogs.
Every time I mow, there's three or four piles.
Yeah. The farmer's market, they were complaining about it today that it's all over the park. Hadn't been a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we would go to the.
Do we have a sign that says pick it up after you?
Couple of signs, but we need to say.
We need a couple of names.
We should.
Yeah, we should very much.
Because I, I moved to, they moved, who else does somebody that lived back there? And took care of it, but that's been in that year. Today's the first time.
I haven't seen it the other day.
You sign the. Cause there is an ordinance message to clean up after your dog.
Can you put that on for Scott tomorrow and order the two fountains for the park? Get the neon sign. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
I can motion to adjourn.
All in favor?